Afternoon session of the Board of County Commissioners, regular meeting back to order. It is Tuesday, 1:30 PM, September 25th, 20, no, 29th, 2025, thank you. And our ninth item on our schedule today is our Health and Human Services Report for the 24/25 Community Health Assessment. And with us, we have Eve Ray, our Health and Human Services Director, and her staff. Eve, would you like to introduce folks, or would you like me to do that?
Either way.
I have a list here, but I think you have the familiarity of everybody in the room, so why don't you go ahead, please?
Okay. Well, thank you all. The, really, some of the people who did the heaviest lifting are at the table here for our Community Health Assessment. Jennifer Webster and Sadie Barata. And then, of course, we have Kathryn Carvelly and Jocelyn Warren and Pacina Edman and Dr. Ledke, all here in the audience. And I am going to pull back the unwanted visitor from under the table, so.
We might be human, let's just call that.
So I won't be doing much else than just introducing this presentation. I will let the experts take it away, but this is a mandate for us, is to complete a community health assessment. We do it in coordination with a group of community partners, including our coordinated care organizations, because they have this mandate as well. But there are other healthcare partners also, all working together with us to assess the health status of our community. So with that, I'll turn it over to you all.
Thanks. Thanks, Board of Commissioners, for having us today. I'm Sadie, this is Jennifer. Like Eve said, we'll be talking about our community health assessment that we just recently completed. And as Eve talked about, we do this as a formal collaboration called Live Healthy Lane. It's a collaboration of community agencies and organizations committed to developing a community health assessment, which then leads to implementing a community health improvement plan every five years. Information about the collaboration and our past assessments and plans, and how to get involved in the current process, can be found at the Live Healthy Lane website, which is also on the screen. Lane County Public Health has been collaborating on a shared health assessment and community health improvement plan since 2010. In 2012, the Oregon Health Authority required the newly formed coordinated care organizations to also conduct a community health assessment and community health improvement plan. And thanks to HHS's strong partnership with Trillium Community Health Plan, we have collaborated on this ever, ever since, along with Pacific Source that joined us in 2020. In 2015 to 2016, we formalized the collaboration as Live Healthy Lane. While there have been changes in how we do this work and our partners in this work, the one constant has been that we've continued to do the work collaboratively to ensure a robust process and a community-driven outcome. And as Live Healthy Lane tagline says, "Together, we can do more than we can do alone." Live Healthy Lane uses a mobilizing-for-action-through-planning-and-partnership framework to conduct the assessment and develop the health improvement plan. The framework has a strong emphasis on community-driven process and has health equity as its goal. We're here to present the results of Phase Two, which is to tell the community story. So the first step in the MAP process is to convene a design team to oversee the work. MAP emphasizes the importance of the work being community-driven. As we conducted, so we conducted a recruitment process from January to March 2024 to ensure broad and diverse perspectives from the community. Our community health assessment design team met every two weeks, from April of 2024 through May of 2025, to help us get this assessment done. And I just want to take a moment to acknowledge their tremendous contribution to this process. We definitely could not have done any of this without them. In addition to providing guidance on everything, from how to engage the community, to identifying indicators, to organizing a very literal amount of data, they also did the lion's share of outreach at every stage, and some of them even hosted events in their communities. The next step is to create a community vision to guide the assessments. So we conducted six events in June 2024 to ask the community what a healthy and equitable Lane County would look like. And using that information, we crafted this vision to guide the assessments. We visited several communities, including both rural and metro, and taking all that information, our design team came up with this vision.
So do you mind just having questions along the way, or do you would rather wait till the end? What's your preference?
Either way is fine.
Great, thank you, go ahead.
So the assessment process contained three assessments, although, as you'll hear, one of those individual assessments was actually three assessments on its own. So the first we completed was the Community Partner Assessment, which is an assessment of the public health system, which includes all organizations serving the health and wellbeing of our community and our collective capacity to improve health and equity. We surveyed over 120 community organizations working in Lane County, and that list can be found on the report on our website. We then held a hybrid data party with survey participants, our community advisory council members, and other community partners to review and interpret survey data. And the main themes we found are listed on this slide, which is: A broad participation in delivering essential public health services; Strong commitment to engage the community and work towards equity; Widespread lack of resources to engage in needed work; And that policy work focuses more on decision-making than grassroots efforts. The next assessment was our Community Status Assessment, which uses quantitative data from secondary data sources to understand health, the social determinants of health, and understanding inequities and structural barriers to health in Lane County. Using the community vision, the design team developed a list of possible indicators. The epidemiologists and public health compiled data for those indicators. And the design team and members of the Community Health Council reviewed the data to help public health staff develop summaries. Our key findings were declining health, especially mental health, among youth, declining access to care, and that many people struggle to make ends meet in significant and persistent inequities. And I'll hand it over to Jennifer.
Okay. So as Sadie mentioned, the Community Context Assessment is actually three different assessments. So the Community Assets and Barriers Assessment identifies key barriers to health and Lane County's assets for achieving health. And this was assessed through an online survey that received over 600 responses. The Built Environment Assessment uses existing data and conversations with Lane County Community Advisory Council and key partners in transportation, housing, and schools to examine how the built environment impacts health. And the Forces of Change Assessment, we used existing data and conversations with six focus groups with over 50 participants to identify the structural and cultural characteristics that shape health in our community. So findings from the Assets and Barriers Assessment were that most barriers to health are lack of access to social determinants, like healthcare, housing, food, et cetera; mental health struggles, and discrimination and stigma. Assets included the accessibility and abundance of the natural environment, and the feeling that most people in Lane County want to work together and take care of each other. The Built Environment Assessment findings included that access to services and resources are largely dependent on where one lives. There are certainly differences in access to transportation, and people without personal vehicles experience the most challenges. Housing security is a critical challenge, and that schools can offer assets to improve health. And then finally, the Community Context Assessment looks at the historical, cultural, and structural context of the community and how those influence health. And again, we visited, we conducted six focus groups with different groups, with over 50 participants, and the findings include that Oregon and Lane County's history is a frequent theme in this assessment. And not just the history itself, five out of the six focus groups also brought up general lack of knowledge about Lane County's history as a barrier to health. Other findings include structural barriers to accessing housing, healthcare, transportation, mental health services, and the fact that incomes have not kept up with the cost of living. And finally, the expressions of solidarity was a big finding in this assessment. Embracing other people's problems as one's own was very common. And we're gonna now go through, we just have to turn the location page. All right. Well, you may have noticed, there are some recurring themes in the different findings from each of the assessments. So once we completed the reports, the design team met for a half-day work session to identify the overarching themes and develop issue statements. These statements were then shared with the community at 10 different data review sessions to help develop issue profiles and identify root causes. Eight profiles were developed, and we're gonna share key points from each of those with a very small sampling of data. And just note that the board packet contains a copy of each of the profiles in depth. So we're gonna start off on a positive note. One of the key findings in the assessment overall was that while we face many challenges to being a healthy and equitable community, people in Lane County want to do the work to address the complex problems we face, and are interested in working together to make sure that health and the social determinants of health are equitably distributed. So for example, about 60% of organizations surveyed in the Community Partner Assessment reported that they use an equity lens for all programmatic and policy decision-making. When asked about what helps community thrive, focus group participants mentioned that most people in Lane County have a genuine interest in being allies and working to achieve equity, even when they're not sure how. More than 50% of organizations surveyed reported that they provide material supports, like food, transportation, and/or stipends, at least occasionally, to support community participation and engagement in their work. And almost 40% of organizations offer Spanish translation and interpretation as standard practice, and about 60% of organizations offer American Sign Language interpretation on an ad hoc basis.
So first, we have Issue Profile One. It's difficult for many people to meet their basic needs in Lane County due to high costs and lack of livable incomes. We found the three highest costs are housing, childcare, transportation. And as this graph shows, the median household income is not enough to meet the costs of a family of four. Other data we found is about 56,000 people in Lane County experienced food insecurity in 2021. More than half of female-headed households with children utilize SNAP or Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program benefits. 20% of Lane County students who responded to the 2022 Student Health Survey reported being hungry at least once per week because there was no food. Students with marginalized identities reported being hungry at least once per week at higher rates than students overall. And 1/3 of respondents in our community survey said the ability to get affordable, healthy food had gotten worse in the past three years. Issue Profile Number Two states that affordable housing is a basic need that is particularly difficult to access, creating a housing crisis and rising rates of houselessness. Affordable housing came up in every assessment, and the community felt that it warranted its own focus. While a lot of progress has been made in addressing the housing crisis, we still have a ways to go. As the slide reads, 56% of renters are housing burden, which means 30% or more of their income goes to their rent. In 2023, more than 10,000 people who sought services in Lane County met HUD's definition of homelessness. In addition, focus group participants brought up stigma for those who experience houselessness, which can make it harder for them to access services and access housing. They also specified how housing is limited for those who have committed felonies, making it more difficult for those leaving prison to get housing, which could be a risk factor for recidivism. Data from the Community Health Assessment, I'm sorry, from the community assessment conducted by Rise of the Umpqua and Lamont Valleys indicated that the group most unwelcome in communities in Lane and Douglas Counties is those who are unhoused. And housing policies in Oregon that limited who could own property made homeownership inaccessible for many until the Fair Housing Act in 1968. We still see disparities in rates of homeownership today, with white people owning their homes at a higher rate than the county overall, and people of every other race and ethnicity owning their homes at lower rates compared to the county. Oh, sorry. No, I'm sorry. No, it's okay. There's a lack of accessible housing, with only 5% to 7% of housing available at fair market value deemed accessible to people with mobility challenges. Based on the Built Environment Assessment, rural areas and metro areas with more affordable housing tend to have less access to public transport, adding the extra cost of a personal vehicle or impacting residents' ability to access other needs like food, jobs, and medical appointments. Issue Profile Number Three states that access to healthcare has declined despite gains over the past 10 years. Much of our quantitative data regarding healthcare access is unfortunately from 2021. And between 2014 and 2021, access to healthcare improved dramatically in Lane County, but what we heard from community members was that changes in the healthcare system after 2020 have resulted in dramatic decreases to access of care. Data from the BURFS, which for the counties is grouped in years of four, so 2018 to 2021, showed a decline in Lane County residents delaying care due to cost from the previous data, which was 2014 to 2017, although it remains highest for those who are at or below the poverty rate and those who have a reported disability. Overall, Lane County residents went from 50% reporting having a routine checkup in the last year in the 2010 to 2013 data to 71 in the 2018 to 2021. Focus group participants reported having a harder time accessing care since the pandemic due to staff burnout, strain on the medical system, and closures. In the 2022 Student Health Survey, 11% of 8th graders and 11th graders in Lane County who responded to the survey reported having unmet medical needs. And a health system assessment completed in 2025 by Lane County Public Health found that recent closures and mergers have contributed to provider shortages. Access to healthcare is getting worse for everyone regardless of insurance type, and people with marginalized identities, especially Black, Indigenous, and other people of color, and people for whom English is not their first language, face additional barriers when seeking care. And community members talked about long wait times for primary care specialists and mental health services, especially for those in rural areas. Issue Profile Four states that many people in Lane County are struggling with mental health concerns, especially youth. Rates of youth and adults experiencing poor mental health are too high, as shown here on this slide. More than 1/3 of students who participated in Lane County's Student Health Survey reported their mental, emotional health was fair or poor in 2022. We know tobacco, alcohol, and other drug use is linked with struggles with mental health. And in 2021, 26% of adults reported any tobacco use. Adults living in poverty and adults with a disability had the highest rates of tobacco use. And 2022, 16% of 11th graders reported using any tobacco products in the past 30 days. 18% reported drinking alcohol in the past 30 days, and 16% reported using cannabis in the past 30 days. Our data showed that people who identified as LGBTQ A+ are more likely to be bullied, feel discriminated against, or feel unsafe or unwelcome. This can lead to social isolation, feelings of hopelessness, and suicidal ideation. And 2022, 26% of 8th and 11th graders reported they had mental and emotional healthcare needs that were unmet. Students who identify as Black, transgender, non-binary gender, and/or LGBTQ A+ had the highest rates of reported unmet needs. Mental healthcare access varies depending on an individual's insurance type and where they live. There is limited access to providers with a cultural understanding and trauma-informed skills to work with Lane County's diverse population. Many community members report wanting providers who share part of their identity. There is a lack of culturally responsive care and a general lack of access to gender health care.
Okay. The next issue is that climate change is a growing challenge that impacts the health of different communities inequitably. Climate change is impacting mental health and impacting the mental health of communities already facing stress and challenges more severely. Extreme weather events have been increasing dramatically since 2020, and most people in Lane County experienced the impacts of a changing climate in the past two years, with as much as 80% for some types of events. However, impacts are not evenly distributed across the county. While smoke events and ice and snow storms have impacted a majority of people in Lane County overall, people on the coast have been less impacted. And while wildfires have impacted fewer people in most of Lane County, 75% of people in the McKenzie River communities reported being impacted by wildfire in the past two years. Air quality in Lane County has also been declining and is notably worse during wildfire season since 2020. Almost 75% of respondents to the 2024 Community Health Survey reported experiencing wildfire smoke in the past two years. And 2/3 of those who experienced smoke from wildfires reported that their physical health was impacted, and more than half reported that their mental health was impacted by smoke events. And finally, one of the most often cited assets for health in Lane County is the beauty and accessibility of our natural environment. Extreme heat, extreme cold, more frequent and more intense wildfires are all threatening one of the things that make Lane County a great place to live. And as one focus group participant said, "It's terrifying. We can bounce back, but our planet can't." The next issue is that the COVID-19 pandemic highlighted many challenges and inequities while creating opportunities for creative problem-solving. While the social isolation of COVID-19 may have exacerbated mental health concerns, it also certainly saved lives. As you can see here, we locally flattened the curve in mortality. Even prior to 2020, many people in Lane County struggled to make ends meet. This was actually another finding in our last community health assessment. And people with two or more systemically marginalized identities were twice as likely to report having had a COVID-19 infection, and were almost four times more likely to report symptoms lasting three months or longer compared to people with no marginalized identities. We also found that not all the impacts of COVID-19 were negative. The community told us that the response to the pandemic was often creative, adaptive, and resilient. Organizations found ways to bring services to people who needed them, using strategies like telehealth and home delivery. And policy strategies like the Child Tax Credit and the Eviction Militarium helped reduce child poverty and ensured people had access to food and housing. And then the last finding in the assessment overall is that the data in these assessments show a clear pattern of unequal, poor health outcomes. People who identify as Black, Indigenous, Latina, Asian, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander, and people who identify as lesbian, bisexual, gay, transgender, queer, asexual, or non-binary gender, and people living with a disability, experience worse outcomes across multiple measures compared to Lane County overall. And as I mentioned earlier, it was particularly poignant to us that five out of six focus groups named the general lack of knowledge about our history as a continuing barrier to good health. So some examples of the patterns we saw in the data. People who identify as lesbian, bisexual, gay, transgender, queer, asexual, or non-binary gender, report higher rates of bullying for mental health and lower rates of financial security compared to the county overall. People who identify as Black, Indigenous, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander, Asian, or Latina, report higher rates of poverty, experience higher rates of preterm birth, higher rates of some chronic illnesses, and lower life expectancy compared to the county overall. And people living with disabilities have fewer financial resources, higher rates of some chronic illnesses, and less access in general compared to the county overall. Okay. So while the primary purpose of the data in this assessment is to inform the development of our next community health improvement plan, the data is also available to our community partners to use to further their work. So two examples, just from this assessment, is that the data was shared with Jeff Kincaid and his team and county administration to help inform Lane County's current strategic plan. And community organizations that participate in our data review sessions have already used the data to apply for funding for their work in the community. Happy to answer any questions.
Was there any commas in that? I was just curious. That was a lot of data. Thank you so much, Sadie and Jennifer. Yeah, give us a little bit of chance to breathe here. Mission trigger.
I can just sort of break the ice and just say, it's so fascinating to me and so important to look at what happens when you start by asking the community what they're experiencing and what they need. And I think back to, actually, when I first met Dr. Ledke in 2010, when I was running LCE, the Lane Coalition for Healthy Active Youth, and Dr. Ledke came to Lane County, and I started working a lot with the OBC Prevention Program and the T-PET Program, the Tobacco Prevention Education Program. And was on the first, it was when Oregon Health Authority split off from DHS, and we had this separate entity, and we, I was on the steering committee that wrote the first OHIP, the Oregon Health Improvement Plan, in 2010, that was published in 2011. And it was so focused on outcomes data, and then like reverse-engineering the solutions, and it was really focused on reducing tobacco use, and alcohol use, and chronic disease burden, and increasing immunization rates. There was very little, obviously, about the impacts of climate change, really on mental health, period, but then the inputs to that climate change. I don't think we talked at all about impacts of race and ethnicity. I don't think we talked about gender discrimination and how gender identity and sexual orientation impacts health. So it's just interesting. It was sort of a very long time ago and not very long ago at all. And so it's really important to see the difference, like I said, when you start with asking the community, "What is your experience?", instead of starting with a data set and saying, "Oh, here's our outcomes, what should we do about them?" So I'm really interested in the next, you know, what we do with this, these voices and this information to inform policy and how we deliver services. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, Vice President.
I just had a question about the surveys. Do we have a map of where they were from? I heard you bring up the coast and stuff, but it's interesting to see where the different neighborhoods and communities they came from.
Yeah, we collected zip code data. We also asked kind of what area they were from. And I will say, we did get enough survey responses from the Mackenzie River area, coastal area, and South Lane County to break those out and do analysis just by those counties. And on our reports, we have that listed out as well.
Please go ahead.
And a lot of this isn't necessarily surprising information. I think in many respects, there's a lot of this material we learned over the years and kind of intuitively know within our community. It's still very challenging to try to figure out a way in which to serve those that are being underserved, knowing that they do fall into categories of marginalized populations, typically speaking. It doesn't surprise me that most people have had health impacts from wildfire. I think that's pretty much what's going to happen when there's a wildfire and you have smoke in your community. You're going to feel it and have health impacts. And, you know, I stopped on this slide where it says 56% of renters are housing cost burden. I kind of internally feel like that was a pretty realistic number, given that rents are so high here and incomes are relatively low to the cost of living in general. I think, as Commissioner Trager said, what do we do with this information at this point? Knowing we've got the information from the community, they've been able to validate probably a lot of information that we intuitively likely knew. But what can we do as policymakers with this information to make better decisions and to help our community in ways to move the needle on some of these numbers? Knowing that some of it is outside of our jurisdictional level, like some things we can't control in this room. But we can certainly provide influence, either legislatively speaking, or just advocating, or perhaps there are other things that you can bring to our attention so that we can make some progress on some of these dismal numbers. Any ideas?
Oh, yeah. I just talked about that. So right now, we're convening, Live Healthy Lane is convening a community health improvement coalition that's using this data to craft our next community health improvement plan. They've identified three priorities already, and I'm probably not going to name them exactly, but one of them is ensuring access to inclusive and affordable healthcare. One is ensuring community resilience and meeting people's basic needs, and the other is improving mental health and well-being. And so they're working on developing goals and strategies within those priority areas, and they will be coming back to you with that plan later this year. And then I'll just say also that the Lane County Strategic Plan is actually built on some of this data. So we shared this data as we were getting it with the folks who are putting together the strategic plan to help inform that process. So a lot of our strategic plan already is responding to some of these data.
Can I?
Just come to the table so the mic picks up.
Yes, absolutely. I just really appreciate that question, Commissioner Buck, and it's been a big point of conversation. In a time where we have less resources, looking at our systems work and our policy work is very critical. And so that has been a conversation that we've been having with staff and our community. The other thing, too, is really looking at not duplicating services, too, and to figure out, you know, we have a lot of coalitions and advisory boards and different work happening in our community. So again, how is our CHAW that grounding place where we can all connect to? And again, I think that helps us working to making our system as efficient, collaborative, connected as possible, again, during a time where we just have less resources. So thank you for that question, and I just want to say there's been a lot of conversation and a lot of intent to really focus in that space.
Thank you.
I've been trying to figure out how to state this. We don't do this alone, do we? So can you talk a little bit more about that? To me, when we, Commissioner Buck asked, what we do with the information, it goes collectively around this room. There's a great deal of intellectual power in the horseshoe over on that end. That's to say, this is what you do for a living. This is how you spend your time. But in our community, at the start of the meeting, you said, "Live Healthy Lane is a coalition." Who is that? Who went into the work on this? Which group?
Yeah, Live Healthy Lane is Trillium, CCO, Pacific Source Community Solutions, Lane Community Health Council, Kaiser, Lane County Public Health.
Shelter care is part of the formal coalition.
That gives me a good grasp of it.
There's been a lot of transition, too, between them.
Yeah, I think it's a hard conversation to have, in a sense, because we have like circles, so we have our resource partners, and our resource partners are actually funding this work. So I think, Sadie, you hit that beautifully. All of those partners are coming at the table with resources to make it happen, and staffing, too. Our CCOs are incredibly helpful and partners in this work. We definitely do it together. And then when we talk about, like, all of the engagement that we do and the outreach that we do, and then as we're developing our Community Health Improvement Coalition, which will inform our community health improvement plan, that there's a lot of partners around the table there, too. So.
And that gets to the gist of my question, the heart of my question, is that as we move forward, as we determine what policies can stem from this, we're not in a vacuum. We have a lot of people giving us information surrounding that. And they concern the people at the table, the people, you know, I see one actual MD in the room, but there are lots of.
Too many.
But there are lots of MDS who can really give information, lots of professionals and certificated people. So to me, that is an important part of this, and this is something that you've always done so well, is bring the partners in from the community to give us the best product, us being Lane County, the best product. And I really admire that in the work that you do. It really does bring forward not just the work we do, but the collective work that really gives us the product, the output product. And as we move down the road, it's not going to be any easier because two of the partners that you talked about aren't going to be there anymore. Two of the heavy hitters in Pacific Source and in the Community Health Council, which is Pacific Source, right? So that being said, it's not going to be any easier down the road. However, it makes it all the more important that the partners that are there, we continue to value them, continue to seek their input, and continue to, not just seek their input, but let them know that we're taking their advice and developing policy and strategic planning surrounding that advice. So thanks for that, and thanks for that clumsy question, but a great answer.
Well, thanks for sifting a lot of data through in a very short period of time. That's probably no small task. You said you met every two weeks, and it probably wasn't enough. You probably still felt under the pressure and under the gun. So thanks for at least giving that to us in a cohesive manner. I've got a couple of questions that are kind of, some of them are kind of on both sides of the baseball field here. I think something that just keeps running around in my head, and we've heard this a lot with people presenting before the board, that incomes have not kept up with the cost of living in Lane County. And so I keep running that thing in my head going, okay, so how are we as a board, Commissioner Buck said, how are we as policymakers to make a difference? And my question would be, would a more aggressive economic development and business attraction plan help overall health in Lane County?
I'm not an economist. That's not a question I am qualified to answer.
I can speak to some of.
Income poverty, thank you.
To some of this. So higher incomes are associated with better health. That association does exist, and I think many of us believe that it has a causal component to it, even though it's a correlational finding, right? That when you have more resources, you have more resources to be healthier as well. So if there were economic development that led to higher median incomes in the community, not just for the folks who are already high-income, but if the focus was really on individuals who are making less income now, bringing them up, that would probably have a greater impact in the ability for economic development to lead to health. The other factor that exists here that I think is important to point out with our Medicaid system where it is right now is that we, as a state, have relied very heavily on Medicaid in order to ensure that everyone receives healthcare. What we are finding now is that we cannot afford the Medicaid system that we have built, and that is true before any federal reductions. So when you look across the country at different areas with different payer mixes, what you find is that healthcare systems work best when there is a higher percentage of individuals who are commercially insured. Now, individuals need to have the incomes to be able to afford things like co-pays and deductibles and all the things that come along with commercial health insurance. But certainly, economic development to rely, to have more jobs that provide health insurance and fewer jobs where people end up on Medicaid even when they are employed, because we know that a quarter or so of people who are on Medicaid are employed and still requiring Medicaid assistance. So that is another way that we could improve access to healthcare and potentially overall health outcomes in our community, because the healthcare system itself would be squeezed less. So I think from better jobs for people with lower incomes, that is more of the community-based macro view, and then the payer mix is more of a micro view in terms of healthcare access within our community. But certainly, economic development could have a positive impact on both of those, I would argue.
Okay, yeah, I hear what you're saying in the back of my mind, too. I'm thinking with my El Rapid duties over there, we had a bunch of public testimony a week or two ago about the proposed distribution center going and being built by the airport. You know, it's proposing 400 and some jobs over there, and what we get, and it seems like we have a pattern in Lane County that when an entity like this comes together and wants to build some large thing and employ hundreds of people, we tend to fight it more than we welcome it. And so I'm just kind of wondering, as policy members, and what you articulated well is that jobs that offer healthcare, that gets people off the OHA roles, would help overall health in Lane County. So back to my question, I put this out for anybody who wants to kind of roll it in their head like I am, would a more aggressive economic development and business attraction help Lane County as a whole? Because without making revenue, it doesn't seem to me like we're going to be closing a lot of these gaps that were illustrated on the slides. Second question I wanted to ask was, you said we had about 600 respondents? Is that what I heard correctly?
Over 600, yeah.
Over 600, so that's about 15% of our population, give or take. And, you know, I always wondered this when we have data. I'm always wondering if we have enough data to make overall blanket assumptions and decisions. Is that perceived to be enough data to do that? Because I always think 15% sounds low in my head.
We got enough responses to have a plus or minus 4% margin of error. So any response rates that are beyond four percentage points is a significant difference.
Even though it still only represents 15% of the overall population in the county?
No real reasonable way to survey the entire county. Yes, that's how we do surveys.
Okay. And then the primary assessment is to give me the next steps. What I heard was that it helped mold our strategic plan, which we just did, and that's being implemented as we speak. And then funding for community work is the other thing I heard. Was there something else that I missed? Was there another goal that we're looking at to get to next steps on this data? And is the data new enough? Most of it was 2021 data?
Yeah, unfortunately, a lot of the data we get is from the state. That's not surveys that we do ourselves. And we won't get the most updated data that they have until 2026, which will be 2023's data.
Okay.
And part of what we're working on next step is the Community Health Improvement Plan, which is happening with both community organizations and community members.
And then the final question I have is, you know, we were talking about limited resources, and I'm wondering if we have limited resources and limited avenues of where we can plug in our money in the future? Is some of the thinking from this data that maybe plugging it into youth, mental health, and overall health, the better overall investment over time that would bring the best results? What's your thoughts on that, just out of curiosity?
I mean, prevention does give us a big bang for our buck, so to speak, and a lot of our focus in public health is on prevention of youth mental health. And one of the priorities is specifically focusing on mental health, and I think a good majority of that is focusing on youth. I think that prevention is always worth the money, personally speaking. I think that there is also probably areas in which we could make improvements in immediate services, but that is not my area of expertise as an epidemiologist, unfortunately. So anyone else?
Yeah, I think we will see some good data come out of the Community Health Improvement Plan. I think that will really guide us in both how we might direct resources and other potential policy choices that you all might be able to make in order to improve the health of the community. So that's what we will focus on in our presentation to you on the chip, is making sure that we're bringing forward the options that are available to you to improve the health of our community, as well as the overview of everything else. But really, that's, whenever we see stuff like this, it's, what can I do? How can I help? How can I make it better? Because we see the suffering within our community, and I agree that we get a huge bang for our buck in prevention, and it is not funded anywhere near because we've got big problems, right? And those big problems suck up big resources, and we also have to address those problems that exist today. So ultimately, how we shuffle that from a dollars and cents perspective becomes the policy decision that you all, as well as other elected bodies, will be faced within the coming years. Yes, please.
Yes, I also just want to make it clear that we don't have a lot of funding for our Community Health Improvement Plan. We really have a dedicated staff person that's coordinating that, and we do get support from our public health staff and our CCOs, but the resources.
Organizations, right, for the public.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the acronym check. So that, it's limited there, and I just want to highlight, too, the prevention plan is one of those places where our CHAW really helps us inform, and I think you hit that perfectly, and Sadie answered that question beautifully, as far as we're really investing in the mental health of our young people. That is a huge priority. So that is one place where we're seeing some really dedicated resource. But I just wanted to be clear, we don't have a lot of resources in this space, and so I think that's where the infusion of how we get our chip and our CHAW, just as they're sharing this out and we're sharing this out to our community, to be kind of that foundation for our work in a community. So we're working on shared goals and hopefully hitting some improvements.
Commissioner Trager, then I want to go back to Dr. Lutke, because he looks like he's about ready to say something.
I do want to just note that in terms of the things that you can do.
Yeah, come to the table, please.
That the Board of County Commissioners is doing a lot when we talk about prevention in terms of youth mental health in the support of our nurse home visiting programs. So we had that presentation earlier, and I just want to remind them that is really important work, and that is doing some really critical work in the area of prevention. So there is work actively that the Board is supporting in the community right now, and we'd love to expand that. We do some additional work in school-based programming through the prevention program, but that piece, really, that commitment to early childhood, as well as through the WIC investment, has made a great deal of difference for public health in that sphere. I just wanted to make that reminder.
Thanks for highlighting.
We were just here earlier with that as well.
Commissioner Trager.
Thank you. Some of the things you raised, well, one, as far as the jobs and health insurance, I mean, one of the problems is that people's access to insurance, which is not the same as access to care, is connected to employment. That's a problem, and that's a bigger picture problem. And I know you feel working at the state level, as many others are, to address that problem. state level, as many others are, to address that problem. Also want to be sure, like, some of the data is old, the Burfist data is, the behavioral risk factors survey, what's the other S?
Survey, system.
System, thank you, I knew there was another S. Is old, but it always is, like, we're always a little behind on that, but the 600 or so statistically valid surveys are real-time, so it's not like all of the data, just making really clear on that. And then to your point about should we invest in mental health, and thank you, Dr. Warren, for saying, like, we are doing that, we are prioritizing that with things that seem, that don't seem so directly that. But one thing this points out, for instance, respondents with marginalized identity reporting higher rates of mental health impacts from wildfire or smoke, is that it is a system that we can't pull one thing out and say, we're funding things, we're funding youth mental health initiatives. I think a way to look at it, given our agreement on priority areas, is anytime something comes to us, is to ask ourselves, how might this help improve mental health for youth? Or how might this help with this other strategic area instead of, it's just a slightly sort of turning it one way, just because the funding doesn't come to us. We don't have the kind of decision to say, let's take all our funding and put it in this one area. And so instead, it's, what are all the different things we're doing from a policy and resource allocation seat? And is, are all those decisions leading us toward improved mental health outcome? Or building more housing? Or all the inputs to the data that we see in front of us, if that makes sense?
Dr. Luckey, please.
Yes, Commissioner Lovell, so I appreciate your comment on, or your question asking about economic development, and I am not an economist either, but I want to step outside my lane. When we see evolution in the healthcare space, I'm sometimes surprised how little power we have, whether it's an entity closing a hospital in Eugene, or Bymark closing its 56 pharmacies. I mean, we just have very little power as a county. I'm also surprised sometimes where we do have money and do have an opportunity to make a difference. And I remember, and Commissioner Trigger took me back there, 2012, 13, 14, somewhere around that time, the commissioners were looking at economic development opportunities that would nudge nascent business into a new space and put some money into buying a wheat thresher so our products weren't sent down to California, which made them no longer economically viable because of the cost of transportation by the time it got to market. And I think it was pretty creative. I was, you know, pretty surprised that the county decided this was a way to go ahead, and there would be not only downstream economic impacts, but downstream potential health impacts. And it also makes me think about the so-called Mittelstand, it's the small and medium businesses in Germany. Many westernized countries really want to look at that model. How is it that a country like Germany, the size of Ohio, and yet they're just an economic force? And how did they do that, despite devastation of world wars and everything else? And economists typically say, it's their Mittelstand, it's these small and medium businesses that really keep them dry, you know, they don't have an Intel, you know, they don't have some of these Microsofts and Googles and these sort of things. But how can smaller communities emulate that sort of initiative? And I suspect each of you have looked at it, or your advisors have, but it's intriguing when we look at entities like that and the downstream impacts on a community like ours, that has a lot of artistic people, a lot of people working in that space, if we could help them develop it in a way that would increase their footprint, so to speak. And perhaps there's an opportunity there.
Yeah, great comment. You are an economist, good job, thank you, doctor, appreciate that. Commissioner Farr, your comment?
Yeah, from a while ago, but I'll go back. But thanks for bringing that up, that, talking about historically where we've been, you know, the, our Health and Human Services Department has been at the front, the cutting edge of innovation, to the extent that we have the resources and capacity to do so. Doesn't change, it's not changed today. Other counties, look at us, and you know that. I mean, it's not something that I'm stating as a weird fact, but there are things that you can't, you can't influence. As you say, Dr. Luckey, who could predict Bymark closing their pharmacies or the closing of a hospital? And I'd like to just point out something that is not your job, it's our job to do. And I'm going to go back to a statement here. It's, the strategies are to support economic development through investing in workforce strategies that provide sustainable family wage jobs in our communities, and encourage a range of safe and affordable housing opportunities, including the development of integrated and supportive housing. That's from 2016, from the CHIP in 2016. Now, what have we done in nine years? We've not done anything, you know? In fact, we've gone the other direction in both of those areas in those nine years. Not your, not, it's not, you're an epidemiologist, it's not your job, that's not what you're hired to do, and that's not what you're great at. It's our job to do that. Then I'm going to go back to another statement here, and this is, "A significant proportion of Lane County residents like access to affordable housing, living wage jobs, health, food, and quality childcare." That's 2018. That's seven years ago, and what have we done since then? Once again, not an epidemiologist's job, and not a director's job, not an MD's job, it's our job. What are we doing to address these things that came out through our CHIP process in 2016 and 2018, and it recurs today? In fact, we're wringing our hands ever more about these things today, about economic development and about living wage jobs. And while everybody perhaps wishes we had a single payer system for our healthcare system, we don't have a single payer system for our healthcare system. And we do rely on what is called family wage jobs to pay for insurance so that OHA doesn't have to cover the insurance costs. So what, you're asking, what policies can we do? Well, certainly, you can guide us absolutely, but that's not your lane. Economic development is not your lane. Affordable housing is not your lane. Living wage jobs is not your lane, that's our lane, so.
Thank you, good point. Okay, anyone else? Okay, well, thank you very much for the presentation. We look forward to continuing the talk as we go forward. Thank you for all your professionalism, all people helped you out. Our next item, as we wrap up our regular meeting for this Tuesday, September 30th, is our Commissioners' Business, our announcements, remonstrance comments, and committee reports.
Chair, if I may, I did ask...
We did ask for announcements from you, yes, you're right.
Well, and I did ask Eve Gray to stick around, and it being concerned for her time. During break, Commissioner Buck had a chance to ask about the impacts of the federal shutdown, and so I asked Steve Adams and Director Gray to speak just very quickly about that, if you wouldn't mind addressing that. I'm assumed that the rest of the Board would be interested in as much of a snapshot as we can get with what we currently know.
Sure. Within Health and Human Services, we anticipate that we will not be able to draw funds off of our federal grants during a federal shutdown. This will probably mostly impact the Human Services Division. We will cover it for the period of time that we cannot draw, we have existing contracts, so we feel as confident as we can that once the federal government opens back up again, we will be able to do the draws that might have been missed during any kind of a shutdown. We were in the community health centers, able to identify enough allowable expenditures to draw additional funds than we normally would this month from our base grant, just in case, so that we were able to maintain cash flow. So, we're actually in a better position in the CHC going into a potential shutdown. The other program within Health and Human Services that could potentially be impacted is WIC. Right now, the state is working very closely with us and very collaboratively, they have some, because the WIC contract ends as of September 30th, and the state does not have a new contract yet from the federal government, that is anticipated once we have a budget. But the state has some carryover from last year that they are dipping into in order to assure continuity of services, and they are committed to keeping us updated frequently on the status of that. If a shutdown were to last more than a couple of weeks, we would need to have some more mitigating conversations with the state about how we assure those services remain available, because that's the one where we just don't have the existing contract until the federal fiscal year turns. But in terms of anyone who's watching and any community members, we do not anticipate any changes to WIC services, and, you know, certainly would notify the community if that were to occur.
Well done, planning ahead.
The only thing I would add, as I did hear from Steve Adams, said, of course, that the agency plans have not been released, and the differences in those plans can make a significant difference to us. We really will need to wait and see. And of course, it will be the White House who will decide what is essential, what is kept open, and we don't have a sense of what that list looks like yet. So, I don't know if that meets your needs, Commissioner Buck.
I think so, for now, we just, there's a lot of open questions that we don't have answers for. And if I remember right, if I heard right, on the news this morning, that the last federal shutdown was this last administration from the current president, and it lasted 35 days. And so my concern is, like, how much time do we have? How much can we cover? Can we cover one month, two months, three months? Probably going to be pretty hard, and you clearly likely don't have those answers today, but it's definitely on my mind, because this, you know, puts a lot of people in a very challenging spot, unnecessarily, unfortunately, and there'd be a lot of stress in the community once a shutdown occurs.
All right, thanks for that update. Do you have any more announcements, Mr. Ruckoff, on your end?
No, sir, that does it for me.
All right, well, thank you. Thanks, Eve, for sticking around and making that known, appreciate that very much. To the Commissioners. Yes, please.
I had mentioned this morning, and I, again, appreciate you reading the statement aloud, these are four separate items, the Commissioners' Business, and so it's a little easier to keep them that way, and I would like the Agenda Team to consider moving the announcements, at least, back up to the top of our meeting, when I think more people are tuned in, because it's often announcing, you know, Commissioner Farr announced a really important community event that's coming up later next month, in October. They're just often our, or it's something that then the administrator can come back to us in the afternoon with. So I'm just wondering if the Agenda Team would have a conversation, you know, I understand their concerns about Commissioner comments and remonstrance and saving those for the end of the day, but some of this is more sort of business that can sometimes lead to other business, so consideration of keeping these as four distinctly separate items and maybe splitting them out and moving them, I don't know if other Commissioners are interested in asking the Agenda Team to entertain that, but, so I would like to ask if that is something of interest, so we have sort of a pin in Commissioner business at the top of our meeting as we have always until recent months, as well as in the afternoon.
Where would you suggest putting it?
Well, it used to be sort of at the top of our meeting after public comments.
Okay, so that'd be like Items 4, 3, around that area?
That would be the conversation, but my point is creating some opportunity for some Commissioner business that isn't so structured as a pre-planned agenda item that happened in the morning, particularly around announcements of interest for the broader community. It's, just, if people are interested in asking the Agenda Team to have that conversation, maybe they bring the item back to us for more discussion, I don't know, but I didn't want to be but-so prescriptive, wanted to allow staff and when our administrators back to be part of that conversation, if there's interest.
I mean, I think the announcement like this morning with the API, if you have people in the room, some days we don't, or it may not make as much of an impact, but some days we have a lot of people in the room, and that's a great time to let them know if something's up, something's happening.
And I think we have people who tune in online at the top of the meeting, too. It's just a little more reliable to know when things that are sort of of community interest might be happening, so asking folks to have that conversation, it seems like enough of us are willing to ask that, great. And I will also mention, October is Substance Abuse Prevention Month, and I mention that mostly because we do a lot of important work at Lane County around substance use prevention and treatment, and also as a way to apologize to my colleagues that I will miss the Blue River event next week because I will be in Corvallis at ADPC Alcohol Drug and Policy Council planning. They're doing a series of statewide meetings to develop the next ADPC plan, and that is the day for the region that is Benton Lane and, I forget which other counties, but in Corvallis, so I will be in Corvallis all day on the 8th. Sadly, missed the Blue River event.
Wow.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Farr.
It's a question, you know, we kind of brush over consent calendar items, and I don't know if all of us fully read every single word that was coming on the consent calendar. I just got a message regarding, "Lane County is deeply concerned that Trillium does not have an adequate provider network," it was at the OHA. That went in a letter that we approved on consent calendar today.
It's an unfortunate statement. I think that reimbursement rates are a challenge for a lot of the providers to contract with them, that's at least what I've heard.
Well, reimbursement rates are a different issue at the size of the network. I mean, Trillium did do the entire network before Pacific Source entered the network, so I think, why don't we bring the providers to the table and ask them if they think they have, or the notes speculate on whether or not they have an adequate network? So I, you know, we can cover that later, but I didn't read the details of this letter to Dr. Hathi, and we're going to witness, did you all read this letter in detail, all the way through?
I did. I even talked to, you know, Eve Gray, our director, I think she reviewed it as well.
Yeah, it was a late edition, so it sort of flagged it.
Well, there was some speculation that Trillium didn't work with Peace Health, and I think that that was a part of the discussion that wasn't accurate. So I, you know, once again, I don't know how accurate the statements are in here.
And, I'm sorry, and was that item A2?
It was, it is.
A2.
A2, yeah.
And that was late arriving?
Yeah, I think that showed up very late last week, yeah.
Unfortunately, Eve left.
Right, and that being said, you know, "Lane County is deeply concerned that Trillium does not have an adequate provider network to take on 90,000 additional lives." We had a message that went out regarding Trillium specifically, and now Pacific Source has 90,000 patients currently, and Trillium, I think, has about a third that many. And, but maybe a part of that was that, we all got the letter regarding Pacific Source's exit that stated that Trillium didn't contract with Peace Health, right?
I thought it was McKinsey-Wilamette and OMG.
McKinsey-Wilamette, definitely, but in the bullet points, it also stated that Trillium didn't contract with Peace Health. And I remember, it was about two years ago, maybe, that they worked through whatever issue they had, which I'm not, I don't even know exactly what the issue was, it might have been reimbursement rates, I'm not sure, but I'm being accurate in things, and some of them is really important, because it raises the eyebrows of people who we count on to be our partners.
Maybe Eve can verify for us.
Shall we have that come back under?
Well, tell you what, maybe I will talk to Eve about it and see how the verbiage came in here, who wrote it and how it was written, and my apologies for not really going into details on this, it is...
So it really is the accuracy of the letter?
You know, the plea to OHA for additional help for Pacific Source or whoever is legitimate plea, we've got to be accurate in what we say.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Farr. Commissioner Buck, please.
I'll just add, since we're in announcements slash Commissioner business, I'm really excited to share with everybody all the tour that we're going to do on the 8th upriver and meeting with the community in person up there. I think you're really going to be impressed with the amount of rebuilding that the community's been doing up there, and it's going to be great to see what we as a Board have invested in over the last five years.
years, and also a sense of what we still need to do. I know the community is very interested in seeing us there, and hopefully we'll have another chance, maybe in Florence or something like this, to get out into the community a little bit more. I really appreciate everybody having the extra time. I'm sorry to see Commissioner Trigger can't join us, but to have the time where we can meet some people in the evening after work. That I've noted when we've had public comment years ago on a evening time in different areas of the community. We did it in Springfield once. We had a huge amount of people show up, and we got a lot of variety in people's comments. In Blue River, it may be really dedicated to Blue River, but I really enjoyed being able to hear from more people, more variety of people on, say, a Monday or a Wednesday evening, not necessarily on every single week or every single month, but finding that extra time to listen to the community and it not be business, that those were not business items, but just having open evening public comment, period.
And those were once a month. This was, this was pre-COVID. Once a month, an evening was set aside for, for public comment in recognition that a lot of individuals can't make it to nine o'clock on a Tuesday morning, and it was very well received.
Yeah, I remember one in Willamille Lane was very well attended. So it's just a consideration in the future if we get more ambitious about moving around the community.
Good. Question? Yes. So just as an announcement or comment, I was at the Coastal Caucus last Thursday and Friday, and that was very well attended. And we had some great discussion on FEMA BiOP, pick 'em. It was, it was good to hear some of the direction other counties and some of the senators and reps were looking to go. We had, the conference was great, it really was, but one of the most interesting ones is there was a doctor from Iceland that came over, and she spoke about the 100% fish and it's turning our $12 or $14 codfish into $5,000 fish. I think we've probably all heard about it at different points, but it was just a, just a very, very impressive presentation that created a lot of excitement. The Coastal Caucus, of course, as it would. Yeah, it was just a, it was a good, it was a great, a great visit. Got to see Gina Nichol, hang out with her at AOC quite a bit, and pretty positive.
Good. In response to Commissioner Trigger's ask on the AOC, the Association of Oregon and California Counties report, we had our quarterly timber meeting over in Lakeside on the coast. It was a wonderful morning. It was a water skier's paradise. I had a really hard time keeping my head in the game, looking out the window at the flat water and the docks. But we, we talked about a lot of different things. I gave you some minutes to that, but I also wanted to add just a few points that weren't in the minutes that I think are important to note. We're still, the looming problem still remains the 2016 forest management plan, and that's really what's been holding back the support for rural counties and the timber production and the total amounts of board feet that we can log and all that. It was supposed to be a balance of best value, and it's not working to the value of the rural communities of which are becoming basically insolvent because of what we're limited to. Just a quick review, the ONC lands, the Oregon and California lands, is dots 18 different counties up from Northern California through Oregon, and those lands were by law in 1937 designated to be harvested at a sustainable level. Well, they, when you reduce disease and, and, and wind and fire and all the other things, they produce 1.1 billion board feet a year in growth. And so sustainably harvest that, one would say that right around a billion board feet a year would sustainably harvest that production and still have enough left over to keep, keep going. Right now, we're harvesting just about under 200 million board feet a year. So when you look at the disparity of how much we're actually harvesting, disparity of how much we're actually growing year by year by year, you're seeing how the compounding fire risk that we're having is what we consider based on material and unavailable wood to be burned. The other question that Commissioner Trigger asked was something you said, you asked about SRS, which is the Secure Rural Schools funding. Whereas before, we had, up until now, the Secure Rural Schools funds are now kind of in jeopardy. There kind of have been crickets in the House, in, in the, in the federal government right now. They were supposed to be part of the big beautiful bill. They got cut out. They're supposed to be attached to the appropriations, and now they're not really being talked about. But before, we were obligated to select either we were, as a county, we're going to receive SRS funds, or we were going to receive timber receipts, and you had to commit to that for a two-year period. So it wasn't that, like, say, one year we had a lot of sales that finally got harvested, and we had a little bit extra in our timber receipts that we could pick that money, it was a little bit more. You had to pick it for a two-year period. And so they tried to figure out somewhere we could do both, and that discussion kind of died. But right now, it looks as though the SRS extensions are bottoming out. So what we're finding now is our main head into negotiation with the, with the new administration is we want to go back to timber receipts, and instead of remaining in the 50% rate that we have now, 50% of the timber receipts go to the government, 50% receipts go to the counties, we want to return back to the 75% of what it used to be. So right now, the timber receipts and the SRS payments are just about equal. So in order for us to move forward, if we can get, which the Bureau of Land Management and the Department of Agriculture, the Department of Interior are coming to the table to talk about a renewed forest management plan, we could, we're lobbying right now to bring our harvest levels to about 750 million board feet a year, which would greatly increase the amount of revenue that we get into our rural counties, which would help them from not becoming insolvent like where they're headed. So that's kind of where that angle kind of went, and then also the minutes I gave you was part of that meeting. But it's, it's still a slog, still a fight, and we're still trying to save jobs and still trying to take care of the natural resource that we certainly have in this area of the country. Yes, please.
Follow-up question on that. I think I mentioned last week I was on OPB's Think Out Loud regarding SRS funding with Commissioner Derek Groot and an economist. So we were talking about this pretty in-depth. And as a question, you know, an outlining, outstanding issue right now is although there's maybe this push to do more board feet right now, in the last budget appropriation, all receipts, 100% of the receipts go to the US Treasury. Counties don't get anything anymore. And the only way that that would change is in another budget approval made by Congress. So, you know, in Klamath County, Commissioner Groot had mentioned that their entire sheriff's office was funded by SRS, and without SRS, they will no longer have a sheriff's office. And of course, we had a public safety task force to talk about potential resources for our public safety. They have previously gone out, gone out to their voters and requested if they would be interested in funding additional resources in order to supplement their, their public safety, and they voted it down in a very large margin. So taking this all into account, I think we're in the unfortunate position where we cannot, you know, we cannot budget for future SRS dollars at this point. I know Senator Wyden's worked very hard with Senator Crepo from Idaho in the past, and there have been proposals, but they have not been passed by the federal government, AKA Congress, that could perhaps start an endowment fund that the earnings could be then debited out to the various appropriate communities across the United States. That is just not a mental winning message in Congress to date. It would solve a lot of our issues when it comes to SRS funding on an ongoing basis, but we'll have to wait to see if, I think he proposes it on a routine basis. It just doesn't get much in the legs there in Congress. So I know that there's advocates that are going back trying to, you know, really educate congressional representatives about how timber receipts are so crucial to county services. But I'm very, very concerned that unless Congress changes its outlooks, all timber receipts regardless are going to go to the US Treasury, and we will not see them here anymore. There has to be a pretty big swing in Congress, I think, to change that fact. We are in a place right now where they're contemplating, you know, a continuing resolution. That's the same as what we have. I'm not sure if that's going to be a result of this potential government shutdown looming this evening. But I think it's in our best interests if all of us can advocate as much as humanly possible to all members of Congress on all different political affiliations that unless they modify that all receipts go to the Treasury and modify it back to where it was, I think advocating for it being upped from 50 to 75% is, is, you know, of course, counties would love to see more, but we've lost our 50% as it is.
Well, according to Jay Sullivan, our DC lobbyist, and Commissioner Groot that was on the call, they're seeing some headway in this negotiation that you described as dismally as it could be described, which is a dismal thing, and we've been looking at it for a couple of quarters now. But they're starting to see some waking up within the Department of Interior and within people that are connected in Congress that are starting to get the message. So they're, they're pushing as hard as they can, and that's what we used to call in the Navy, that's hope, glowing wings on worms. So that's where we're headed. So, yeah, I agree with you, lobby where we can. Sorry, is there anything else? Commissioner, or board assignments?
Yeah, board assignments. I think we already did this, and we're just waiting for it to get scheduled, but if not, I want to be sure we did. We have a new clerk, a new elections clerk, and would just love a chance to have him come before us and meet him, and he's doing some really great work and also some really fun things, I've seen, now that he's doing weddings again and doing some fun themed, themed things. And so he just sounds like a really great and interesting person, and it would be great to get him introduced.
I will confirm that. It's my understanding that he'll be with the board mid-October.
Great, thank you.
And then it's, we didn't get assignments, or head nods on the assignment in terms of the accuracy of the letter, but a quick cursory search made it clear that Trillium's position was about 180 degrees from what our letter stated. So I'll be working with Commissioner Farr to make sure we have an understanding and have the safeguards to make sure that, you know, as we're doing some of these letters, which I know are fast-moving, and, but they're accurate and don't put us in an embarrassing position with critical partners, if that's okay with you, sir.
I think, you know, if we are stating something that is in contradiction to what one of our partners says, then we should be very careful about doing that.
Yep, agreed.
And I'm looking at an article from the Lookout, it was a well-written article from the Lookout regarding what Trillium said about their ability to cover, and they say they can in the Lookout's article, which is what I read it.
All right, there's no other business. Our next scheduled board meeting is Tuesday, October 8th, in Harris Hall at 9:00 AM. If there's nothing for the good of the order--
Is it? Sorry, I want to make sure, we're down next week?
Yes, down next week.
We are down next week, August, oh, what'd they say?
Oh, except there's the--
We're going to Blue River next--
Blue River.
Wednesday.
Yes.
Wednesday. Not a business meeting.
Wednesday.
There is an evening.
Yes, there's--
Okay.
Wednesday.
I wonder if there's a remote. If I'm back from Corvallis, I'll work with Jessica on that.
We need to announce and notice it, but yeah, we'll find out if there's a remote.
Okay, well, if the public understood any of that, it's Wednesday, October 8th, at 2025 in Blue River. If there's nothing else for the good of the order, we are--
It said 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM.
On Wednesday, the 8th is the, the tour is in the afternoon, and then the--
Our website's a great place to check accurate information, so I indulge the public to do that. We announced this meeting adjourned.